Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 23 meeting of the Emmitsburg Planning Commission. To get things started, we'll stand and say the pledge to the flag. And I meant to say whoever wishes to stay in may stand. Don't have to stand. So. Gosh, I guess the first thing we do is reorganize. How about that? So. We're here to elect new officers this evening, and as I mentioned last time, I will not be included in any of the office positions because I will be leaving next month. So it's up to other folks to serve. So I'll get things started. Since I'm not eligible for any officer positions. So the first position is the chairperson. And do I hear any nominations for the new chair? And I understand that Valerie Turnquist is with us online via Zoom. Okay, well, I assume she's here.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm listening.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I'm looking for nominations for new chair. No.
How about Kevin?
I didn't.
Sorry. I hate to nominate Kevin.
Okay.
I second nominations.
Okay, we have a nomination for Kevin Hagan. Are there any other nominations? If not. Kevin's the new chair. You want to take over? You want to.
No, we can, we can stay. Rodeate.
Okay, next up, we have nominations for vice chair. Do we have any nominations?
I'll nominate Patricia Galloway.
I'll second that. So. We have a vote for Patricia Galloway. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Patricia's the new vice chair.
You accept.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have nominations for secretary.
Point of order.
Yeah.
This past year in April, we made a modification in the secretary stuff. But we never voted on, at least I can't find in the minutes anywhere we voted on it. And we actually basically did away with the secretary position. Because Najila started doing it all.
If I may, we didn't really do away with the secretary position. It's just that our planning staff basically takes over and does the minutes for us. But we still have a secretary. There might be times you need to sign documents or something. That's clear. Under the rare circumstances that both the chair and vice chair are missing.
It's the secretary.
Third and.
Just clarifying it. Seeing the point, when I seen the SOP coming through, I said, okay.
But if Dan's willing, I move that he retain his position as secretary.
I second. It's always tradition that the newest person.
Well, that's Dale.
He's alternate. He's off. He can't get it to answer. You're stuck unless somebody else wants to step up.
Okay.
Okay. Next, we move on to the approval minutes for the September 25. Meeting. Anyone have any comments on the minutes?
I had one edit to the minutes. Be on the very last page, item eight.
Which one?
Item eight. Next meeting date, that should be Tuesday, the 23rd.
Oh, Tuesday is then Monday. Okay.
Is it really, is the date really September? That seems like ages ago.
No, no, she's reading the wrong line. It's December 11th minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other? Comments or? Modifications anyone like to make to the minutes?
Move that we approve the minutes for December 11th.
Second.
Minutes were approved by Mark and seconded by Dan. So minutes are approved. Next, we move on to a public comment. Do we have anyone that wants to make a public comment online or? Okay, with no public comment, we'll move to one to go over our old business for the comprehensive plan update. Jalen, you got?
So like, like I said on the agenda, it's gonna be discussed at the next meeting. Staff needs some more time to make the adjustments at the last meeting. Yeah.
Okay, move on to new business. Our vice, first item will be in the improvement plan for Mount St. Mary's University, the F Wing entrance. Do we have?
No one.
The town staff have any comments?
Okay, um, so the applicant is seeking approval of this improvement plan that involves the redevelopment of the parking lot and drop off area for the E Wing section of Daughters of Charities Ministry's property located at 341 South Seaton Ave. This project involves the demolition of existing pavement and the drop off loop to establish new sidewalks, parking, landscaping, and also stormwater management BMPs. So a couple of things to note about this plan. It proposes an additional 0.56 acres of impervious coverage. But it also. Sorry, give me one second. The person from Mount St. Mary's, he, he tried the Zoom link but didn't work for him. He just emailed me, so. And my computer just shut down.
Is he trying to get in now? Still not able to get in?
Thanks for your patience. We're trying to figure this out. Do you want me to keep going with my?
Yeah, just keep going with your.
Okay, so like I said, this plan has proposed an additional 0.56 acres of impervious coverage and also proposes to submerge gravel with then BMPs on site to treat the additional impervious surface. Staff has reviewed the plan and the town engineer sent a set of comments that have been included in the memo from December 15th. And the applicant has also prepared a set of responses to these comments, provided that provided to us last week. And that's what I passed out earlier. Well, staff is currently reviewing these responses to determine whether they've been adequately addressed or not. And we've, we're also reviewing the updated plans. It looks like a lot of the comments have been addressed, but the applicant has been regularly engaging with the town engineer and town planner to hash out the details. One of the comments that the engineer had was, well, the first one on the improvement plan and site plan to include electrical conduit associated with light pole to be relocated. And the applicant responded saying that's been removed from the plan and that all the nearest on-site lights will be removed and replaced with new fixtures and light poles. If photometrics are desired, the, these can be delivered once they're complete, to which we've responded saying that photometrics have to be included in the improvement plan. So that's one thing they have to satisfy before moving on. And like I said, we're still reviewing the rest of the plans. But given that they've been in constant, constant communication to hash out the details, staff proposes conditional approval of the improvement plan.
Then the commissioners have questions this time?
Mr. Chair, I had a question about the tree removal. Do we know how many trees are being removed and what is the procedure for that? I remember a discussion about a fee in lieu of, or do they have to plant, you know, as many trees as they're removing or how does that work? And do you know how many trees they're actually taking down?
If I may, I have part of the answer to that question. A lot of trees taken down are dead trees. And they're taking them down because they're putting parking lots in where they are currently standing.
Right, I understand that. But doesn't the town have some sort of?
It doesn't apply on the seating, on the seating complex. It's not in town limits. Not in terms of town, not in terms of town ordinances. It's private property.
That's still within town limits.
And so, yeah, I changed that. Yeah, it's, because it's institutional, the laws, the rules are different. They are planting tree. There is no tree in this new one.
You have.
I thought I saw a count on the big ones, if I remember now.
I was just going to say, I think that the staff would need to answer Valerie's question, I believe.
Sorry, I don't remember off the top of my head how many. But it's more plants are being planted than what's being removed. But I can confirm that number.
If I may, I mean, if you look at the grading and landscape plan, that C103, it shows quite a number of trees being put in and they're meeting all the requirements for the percentage of the parking lot that needs to be covered. I mean, I haven't counted them all up, but it sure looks like they're putting in more than they're removing.
Yeah.
According to the landscaping plan.
It's like putting over 150 trees.
And just to respond to Commissioner Garnett's, this property is in the town limits and they have to adhere to the town code.
I corrected myself. I said, no, they are. Institutional. I caught myself, corrected it. Countments are just after it.
So Val, are you satisfied with the information we have now?
Um, yes, I'm satisfied, but moving forward, maybe Najila could just email me just to kind of clarify, you know, when those rules apply and when they don't, and what is the rule? Because I know for new developer, developers, and I, and I understand it's not a new development. But there is a requirement for, you know, if you're removing trees that you either have to pay a fee or, and, and, and it may be only if you meet certain conditions. I really don't know. That's why I'm asking. I just remember having these discussions in the past.
Right, so the fee in lieu is like the last resort. So first, if you're removing trees, you would have to show that there you can forest onsite or somewhere else. And if not, if you're not able to, that's when the fee in lieu applies. I can also send you the section of the code that addresses the fee in lieu.
Okay, that would be great. Yeah, but you're saying it doesn't apply in this situation.
Right, because they're affording. Or they're replacing a lot of the plants that they're moving.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners?
If I may. Yeah, I mean, it looks like the applicant has addressed all, all the concerns of the engineer, and I realize staff hasn't had this very long. It just came in and they're still assessing to make sure that they are meeting all the comments of the engineer, but you know, it looks, it's like a good plan to me overall.
Still no luck with the applicant.
Nope, I'm the only one on Zoom. I'll let you know if somebody joins.
As you all know, when I just had one questions where they're putting in the impervious surfaces, the cemetery there is below ground level. Is there any discussion of the water runoff into the cemetery to the east there?
Which cemetery? There was two of them there.
Right, but it's the first ones right there against the road.
Right, so the, um, sorry. The BMP is being connected to, to an outlet structure, so it wouldn't be going into the cemetery.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, all, all the runoff should be going into the stormwater.
Right, it's just I figured what's, that's below water, below grade now, and it already floods.
And you have the roadway, the dirt is outside the roadway, so.
Yeah.
Storm drain should catch it.
So any word from the applicants of C's typing over there furiously telling?
No, no response from him. I sent, I just sent him the current Zoom link.
So, Mr. Chair, although I would like to hear from the applicant, I don't know that we need to, to move on and improve this. It doesn't seem to be too controversial.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if at some point the applicant comes in and wants to say something, we can do that, but I'm ready to go ahead and make a motion.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve this?
I move to approve the improvement plan for E Wing entrance with the following conditions. All the comments by the town engineer. The owner shall provide the town with two two paper and one PDF copy of the signed plan, and the developer shall pay such fees that are charged from time to time by the town of Emmitsburg for further reviews or permits as may be required concerning the proposed development.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Long. Does anyone second the motion?
I will second.
Okay, we have a second motion by Commissioner Galloway. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Motion approves five to zero. The next thing we have on our thing is for the planning commission's rules and procedures. Mark, you were driving a lot of this. You want to speak to it?
Yeah, I guess I initiated this. The, the first thing that popped in my head at one point when I was kind of reviewing this was just the time needed to be changed, and Najila has already taken care of that. The time of our meetings. I got reading, I thought there might be some other things we want to just discuss and think about, including. And you received, I think I sent this out to everyone yesterday. The email that has all my suggested comments, and then Najila provided copies this evening for everyone as well. But, but the first item that I was suggesting would come under section five conduct of commission members, and I'm suggesting to insert at 5.5 the, the being recognized and just mention that commission members shall only speak after being recognized by the presiding officer. Oops, sorry, thought I had that off. So, so this has not been a big problem at all, but, and we don't often have a large audience, but it's just a good, a good rule for meetings, you know, just to keep things organized and from descending into chaos if the, the members just get the chair's attention first and be recognized by the chair before speaking. So that's why I'm putting that in, or suggesting we put that in. So do we want to take comment by comment and discuss?
Any of the commissioners have comment on that?
Um, I guess just one quick comment. I know I wasn't recognized. An example, like Dan said, point of order a moment ago. Would he have to get the chair's attention to say point of order? Because I mean, I don't know, it just seems a little strict, or I don't know that. What are your thoughts?
Under.
Are there times under Robert's rules of order that?
Yeah, as you know, I'm, my favorite document that I carry copies of. Under Robert's rules of order, even a point of order would have to go back to the chair or the presiding officer.
You'd have to get the chair's attention before saying order.
Yes, that's Robert's rules of order.
Yeah.
And if I may.
Yeah.
So, and, and I don't, personally, I don't think you have to be too strict about it, but you know, and sometimes, you know, sitting here as chair, you don't see people out of each side of you. But I, I know sometimes if you just keep, keep your mic off and turn the mic on when you want to be noticed, the red light will come on and maybe the chair will see the red light. And if everyone keeps it off at other times when they aren't speaking, it's helpful, or just kind of raise your hand, Mr. Chair, when I speak, something like that, just to get the chair's attention. But, you know, I don't know that we have to be too terribly strict about it.
Najila, can we change the rules ourselves like this, or do we need, does it need to go to the council for us to change the rules?
Yeah, it needs to go through the council, so.
So again, if I may. So, so we have other things to discuss yet. I'm kind of suggesting we, you know, I'm going to explain all my recommendations, and if anybody else has anything, you know, throw that out and then kind of sit on it for a month and not vote on this tonight would be my idea. And just, just give people time to think about it a little bit.
Okay, that makes perfect. Does anybody have any other questions about the number one listing we had there about recognition by the presiding officer? Okay, with that, we'll move on to section number two.
Okay, Mr. Chair. At the section three where it says hearings, I'm just suggesting put the word public in front of hearings. It's probably implied, but just thought it's good to make that explicit that it's a public hearing. And kind of tied along with that, and our town attorney isn't here this evening, but I, I wanted her to clarify for us exactly what is a public hearing, or, or maybe Najila can do that, I suppose.
Sorry, so I did reach out to Leslie and Clark today, or yesterday. And I haven't heard back yet, other than. So, yeah, they didn't say anything about public hearing, but they did say something about what constitutes a quasi judicial matter for planning commission. And that subject is apparently limited, but they're doing some more research and we'll get back to us.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the last time I checked, we're still subject to the majority, can't have discussions outside of one of those meetings? Or, you know, without announcing it as a public hearing?
Right, you can't have discussions.
So, we, we commissioners really shouldn't be discussing anything outside of this meeting.
Right, but it's, we've given, we've given the impression, we ran, I ran into this with other commissioners on the commission. They said if three of us were together, even if we're not talking, it, it gives the impression of business. Even if there's no discussion to take place.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I was trying to say.
Yeah, yeah, it's just we shouldn't, we have to be aware of that. Okay, well. Wait, do you think she could email us on the meetings? That way we have that for our next meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so part of the reason I was bringing that up was because if you read in our current rules of procedure under hearings, at any hearing, we're supposed to swear people in. And we have done that very rarely. There's only been a few circumstances where we've sworn people. So that's why I thought we needed to get clarification as to what circumstances we need to do that. Because I've noticed since being on the county planning commission, we're swearing people in. Cart block at every meeting, at the beginning of the meeting, everyone gets sworn in, but that may just be because there's so many issues that it's just covering the bases. So I wasn't sure exactly when people needed to be sworn in or what constitutes a quasi judicial matter. So I wasn't sure exactly when people needed to be sworn in or what constitutes a quasi judicial matter.
And I guess that moves us on to six one.
Yeah, the cross examination, which since I've been on the planning commission has never happened here. And when I say cross examination, I'm not meaning that the commissioners are asking questions of the applicant. This would be someone in the audience or in the public that would be asking questions of the applicant. And, and it would be people that, say you are reviewing a site plan somewhere, and there's a neighbor that is concerned about what's being developed. That they would have the opportunity to stand up and actually ask questions of whoever the applicant is. But the key is that they need to be very precise, and they only should be questions. The, the person doing the cross examination shouldn't be speechifying. Because quite often these folks kind of have an axe to grind or something. Quite often tend to want to give speeches about something, so, you know, it needs to be controlled somewhat, but and here again, it's probably something we need to get clarification from legal on, but it might be something good to include in our rules. If it ever comes up, it may be that no one knows that you can do this.
Right.
But legally, you're allowed to do it.
Does any of the commissioners have questions about that or comments?
I can, I can add something on that. The Board of Commissioners have rules of procedure that were approved by legal, and there is information in there about public hearings. So we could potentially pull quite a bit of information out of those rules of procedure to put into our policy. It talks about, you know, public hearings and swearing people in and, you know, cross examining, so on and so forth. So the language is already there that we could tap into.
So Valerie, on that, was the speaking time limit included in the cross examination or does it wasn't addressed or?
I think, let me see, I opened it up, let me see real quick if I can find it. Yeah, it does say applicant testimony 10 minutes. Other public testimony, five minutes, rebuttal, five minutes. The president has a discretion to limit the presentation. Everything has to be sworn, and there's a statement, do you solemnly swear, blah, blah, blah. It talks about formal rules of evidence. The commissioners may ask questions. Any exhibits presented must be assigned an exhibit number. And these board, these rules of procedure were, I think, compiled by Leslie and then adopted by the Board of Commissioners. So there's quite a bit of, so we may want to look at those rules of procedure to see what we want to maybe take out of there and incorporate into ours.
Did you get that out to us?
Yeah, I can do that, yeah.
Okay. Anyone have any questions about Valerie's comments?
So, yeah, I basically agree with Valerie. There may be some circumstances that would be different with the planning commission than the board of commissioners. Although I can't think of what they might be, but, you know, of course, Leslie should review whatever we decide to do. But including the times for testimony and all that, I think it's a good idea. Times for the applicant to present and cross examine and, you know, all that.
They're entering, any other questions or comments anyone has? Okay, with no question of comments, I'll recommend that we take a look at these and everything that was said about these changes over the next month. And then we can look at voting on this as part of, put it on next month's agenda at the end for us to discuss and go over and vote. And hopefully we can have Leslie reviewed it by then, and if we vote, it'll go up to the commissioners then to make the formal changes.
I believe so, but let me check on that because it's just the planning commission's rules of procedure, so. I don't know if Board of Commissioners, yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'll find out.
Okay. With that being said, looks like we have nothing else to do tonight. That means I would call this meeting to an end of the Emmitsburg Planning Commission at 7:34.